I call to order the first meeting of the municipal year 2022. My name is Liz Braden, District Nine City Councilor for Alston Brighton. As required by the Boston Charter, I have the honor of presiding over the opening of our first meeting as the oldest member of your legislative body.[19.23][19.23][applause] At this time, I ask Madam Clerk to please call the roll to ascertain the presence of a quorum of the Boston City Council.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Councillor Arroyo.
Present.
Councillor Baker.
Yeah.
Councillor Bach.
Present.
Councillor Braden?
Oh, present.[45.51][45.51][laughter]
Councillor Flynn?
Yeah.
Where are you? Councillor Edwards?
Edwards.
Councillor Fernandez-Anderson?
Present.
Councillor Flaherty?
Yeah.
Councillor Lara Hicks?
Yes.
Councillor Louis Jean?
Present.
Thank you. Councillor Mejia?
It's Louis Jean, and I'm here.
[laughs]. You're already sisters in service, I can tell.
You said that name right.
Councillor Murphy?
Here.
Councillor Murphy. Councillor Warrell?
Present.
Thank you. Madam Chair, all our attendants.
Thank you. I've been informed by the Clerk that a quorum is present. I would like to welcome all of our guests today in the Christopher A. Ionella Chamber, named in honor of the longest-serving city council president of eight years, Councillor Ionella, who served as a councillor on the city council for 33 years. I want to exercise my privilege as chair to say just a few brief words. Take the moment, as they say. This is what democracy looks like. It took a huge effort to get us here today. I want to thank all the candidates who put themselves out there to run for office for city council in 2021. I want to thank all the volunteers who knocked doors and made calls for their preferred candidate. So many of our volunteers and supporters are unable to be attend today and partake of the celebrations, but I do want to recognize all that effort and to thank you very much for your --[158.59][158.59][applause] I especially want to thank all the staff at our Elections Department, who ensured that we had a safe, well-run municipal election in the middle of a pandemic. I want to thank the voters of Boston, who actually turned out to vote to elect a new mayor and a new city council.[184.62][184.62][applause] And now the work begins. I look forward to working with all my colleagues as we come together to serve all of the residents of Boston. And this is an unauspicious start to a new city council, so thank you all.[202.01][202.01][applause] I'd also like to take this opportunity to welcome to the body our body's five newest members, who just this morning joined the eight returning councillors in taking the oath of office administered by Mayor Michelle Wu. Today, we begin the city council session with a body that is increasingly reflective and representative of the city of Boston, which we all serve and represent.[233.65][233.65][applause] Among our body, we welcome the first Haitian-American member of the country's third-largest The Haitian -- Boston is the third-largest Haitian diaspora in the country. The first member of Bejanne, Barbados, and Dominican descent. Our second Afro-Latino member of Dominican descent. And the first form --[268.14][268.14][applause] And the first formally undocumented first African immigrant hailing from Cape Verde. And the first Muslim member.[278.27][278.27][applause] We welcome all our newest councillors. Councillor-at-large Ruthie Lejeune of Madepan and Hyde Park.[294.02][294.02][applause] Councillor-at-large Erin Murphy of Dorchester.[300.12][300.12][applause] Councillor for District Four, Brian Warrell of Dorchester.[306.12][306.12][applause] Councillor for District Six, Kendra Hicks of Jamaica Plain.[313.02][313.02][applause] Councillor for District Seven, Tanya Fernandez-Anderson[319.58][319.58][applause] of Roxbury. I would ask at this time for our councillors and guests to please rise, if you are able, as I introduce today's clergy. After the invocation is delivered, I would ask all members and guests who are able to remain standing as we recite the Pledge of Allegiance. It is my great pleasure to welcome and introduce Imam Abdullah Farouk?
Farouk.
Farouk, I think I got it.
You got it.
Imam Abdullah Farouk is a Boston -- a native Bostonian, who has been the Imam of Boston's oldest Muslim house of worship for 26 years, the mosque for the praising of Allah, which was founded in the 1950s. He served as a prison chaplain for the Massachusetts Department of Correction for 15 years, and was the Muslim spiritual advisor and chaplain at Northeastern University for more than a decade. In 1991, Imam Abdullah was principally responsible for establishing Boston's first United Aid Celebration, a tradition that unites Boston Muslims till this day. He's also one of the initiators of the effort towards building New England's largest mosque located in Boston, an effort which has since been taken on by the Islamic Society of Boston and is now called the Islamic Society of Boston Cultural Center. He is a past president of the Islamic Council of New England and past member of the Imam's Shura Council of New England. A father of both biological and adopted children, and with 28 grandchildren, Imam Abdullah's goal as a Muslim leader is to help unite Muslims, to do the work of establishing Islam as a complete way of life, and to educate and call others to Islam, and to establish and maintain relationships with people of goodwill and to serve the needs of humanity. It's my great pleasure to welcome Imam Abdullah Farouk.
Thank you so much.[452.81][452.81][applause] I want to begin by wishing all of you peace. That's what we'd like to see in our city. I think it's so very important at this time, this day and age of such discord and ill-health, that we look for peace in our hearts and in our minds. So I begin in the name of Almighty God, Allah, the most gracious, the most merciful. And all praise belongs to Almighty God, Lord of all that exists, the gracious and the merciful God, Master of the Day of Judgment. It is you alone, God, that we serve, and you alone that we turn to for help. We ask that you guide us to the straight path, the path of the -- a path that is pleasing to you, not ones that encourage your wrath or ones who have been led astray. We ask you to open up the gates of your mercy for us, for our poor and our sick, the ones who are marginalized in society. I ask that you help our homeless and our elderly, our young ones, the destitute, those who are addicted. I ask that you look upon our affair here in Boston as one that requires your help, because we believe in you, and we ask you for your help on this day. We pray for our council members, and I begin with Michael Flaherty, Julia Mejia, Ruthie Lejeune, Erin Murphy, Lydia Edwards, Ed Flynn, Frank Baker, Brian Warrell, Ricardo Arroyo, Kendra Hendricks, Tanya Fernandez, Kenzie Bach, Liz Abrida. We pray for them as a whole, but we pray for them as individuals as well. Because if you're not well as individuals, you'll never be able to take on the task of handling this great city. We pray also for their families as a whole, but we pray for them as individuals, and we pray for all of them. We pray for our respected mayor and the honorable Michelle Wu, the first elected woman of Asian woman mayor and of Asian descent. We pray that they are able to work together with the council members, so that we can come up with the best outcomes in this city. We pray for those who assist them to be blessed with good health, a keen sense of responsibility and determination when dealing with their tasks. We ask -- let me see if I can find this. We ask that the women of our council be blessed with the qualities of being mothers and daughters, so that they can nurture this great city of ours, Boston, through the many difficulties that we face. We ask that you bless the men of the council to be blessed with the qualities as good fathers and sons and leaders of this great city. You are a merciful God, and so we call upon you for your mercy and your guidance. We ask that you -- the great diversity that this room shows, that we are here in Boston, that this great diversity is unified under the understanding of e pluris unum, and that you are able to work together to bring out the best outcomes for this great city of ours. We ask that this great diversity and leadership is shown, and we ask that you, God, who have power over all things, that you -- we place our affairs and we place our trust in your hands, as we work together to bring our city to a brighter future. We ask that you help us, Almighty God, and I ask you to say amen.
Amen.
Thank you so much for letting me be here.
Thank you. Thank you, Imam Abdullah. We will now recite the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, everyone. You may be seated. Now, onto the first order of business, which is the approval of the minutes. Seeing and hearing no objection of corrections to be made, the chair moves to approve the minutes of the last meeting of Wednesday, December 15, 2021. All in favor of approving the minutes from the last meeting, please say aye.
Aye.
The ayes have it. The minutes of the last meeting have been approved. I have been informed that there is one late-file item to be added to the agenda for today's meeting. The docket is in order to adopt temporary rules for today's council meeting. All those in favor of placing the late file on the agenda, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
The order is now properly on our agenda. The Clerk moves to take the late file, temporary rules out of order, so that we may have a set of rules for today's meeting. Seeing and hearing no objections, Madam Clerk, would you please read the late file into the record?
Thank you, Madam Chair. In City Council, an order of Councillor Liz Braden orders that the rules of the Boston City Council for municipal year 2020 to 2021, except Rule 36, which is council committees, be adopted as temporary rules of this council until permanent rules are adopted for the 2022 to 2023 municipal year, filed in the City Council, January 3, 2022.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. The chair moves for adoption of the temporary rules order. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. The ayes have it. The rules are suspended, and the order to pass temporary council rules has been adopted. The chair recognizes Councillor Arroyo.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Madam Chair, I move for the election of a president.
Thank you. Councillor Arroyo has nominated -- oh, Councillor Arroyo has nominated Councillor Flynn for council --
No, no. Has moved the election of --
I knew I was going to screw up.[837.62][837.62][laughter]
But -- Councillor Arroyo has moved for the election.
Councillor Arroyo has moved to nominate a new council president. And Councillor Lydia Edwards? Councillor Arroyo has nominated Councillor Flynn for president. Oh, sorry.
She had a point, but --
Yeah. So --
Councillor Braden has nominated.
Oh, yeah. I didn't say that.
We now move for the election of a new council president.
We now crawl the roll. Madam Clerk, would you like to call the roll?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Councillor Arroyo.
If we -- sorry. I don't think that we nominated anyone here.
I think --
No. Move for the election. So each individual councillor will name the councillor that they are voting for. I'm sorry, I should have clarified. Yeah. Councillor Arroyo.
I nominate Councillor Ed Flynn.
Thank you.
And I vote for him as well.
Councillor Baker?
Ed Flynn.
Councillor Arroyo, Ed Flynn. Councillor Baker, Ed Flynn. Councillor Bach?
Ed Flynn.
Councillor Bach, Ed Flynn. Councillor Braden?
Ed Flynn.
Councillor Braden, now Ed Flynn. Councillor Flynn.
Good decisions.[925.12][925.12][laughs]
Councillor Edwards?
Ed Flynn.
Councillor Edwards, Ed Flynn. Councillor Fernandez-Anderson?
Ed Flynn.
Councillor Fernandez-Anderson, Ed Flynn. Councillor Flaherty?
Ed Flynn.
Councillor Flaherty, Ed Flynn. Councillor Lara Hicks?
Councillor Lara Hicks?
Ed Flynn. Councillor Louis Jean?
Ed Flynn.
Councillor Louis Jean? Ed Flynn. Councillor Mejia?
Ed Flynn.
Councillor Mejia, Ed Flynn. Councillor Murphy?
Ed Flynn.
Councillor Murphy, Ed Flynn. And Councillor Warrell?
Ed Flynn.
Councillor Warrell, Ed Flynn. Councillor Braden?
Ed Flynn.
Councillor Braden, now Ed Flynn. Councillor Flynn.
Good decisions.[956.12][956.12][laughs]
Councillor Edwards?
Ed Flynn.
Councillor Edwards, Ed Flynn. Councillor Fernandez-Anderson?
Ed Flynn.
Councillor Fernandez-Anderson, Ed Flynn. Councillor Flaherty?
Ed Flynn.
Councillor Flaherty, Ed Flynn. Councillor Lara Hicks?
Councillor Lara Hicks?
Ed Flynn. Councillor Louis Jean?
Ed Flynn.
Councillor Louis Jean? Ed Flynn. Councillor Mejia?
Ed Flynn.
Councillor Mejia, Ed Flynn. Councillor Murphy?
Ed Flynn.
Councillor Murphy, Ed Flynn. And Councillor Warrell?
Ed Flynn.
Councillor Warrell, Ed Flynn. Madam Chair, the council has unanimously nominated Councillor Edward Flynn from District
It is my honor to announce that we have elected a 2022/2023 city council president. I yield the dial, the gavel, and the dais to council president.
Thank you, Liz. What's up, Sam?
Thank you, Councillor Braden. And thank you to my colleagues for placing their trust in me as your incoming city council president. I first want to say and welcome all of your families that are here today on this afternoon. I know your families are very proud of you and what you accomplished. And you are a real credit to your family, but also you're a real credit to your district and the city as well. To our colleagues on the city council, Mayor Wu, our families, friends, and supporters, and to our neighbors across the city of Boston watching online. I am honored to be elected by my colleagues as president of the council. I'm humbled by the trust you've placed in me. I'm honored to welcome five new councillors to our body. I know Councillor Braden did a tremendous job of providing some background information, but we're so fortunate to have such well-experienced and educated incoming colleagues. The most diverse city council in the history of Boston. We have two at-large councillors joining us this year. Ruthie Lejeune of Hyde Park, the first Haitian-American elected to the Boston City Council, a lawyer and advocate for working people. And Erin Murphy of Dorchester, who began serving with us recently at the end of last term, an educator with decades of experience in the classroom. We also have three new district councillors joining us as well. Brian Warrell from District Four, a small-business owner with deep roots in his community. Kendra Lara Hicks from District Six, the first person of color to represent her district. She is an artist, a community organizer, an activist, and we know that she'll continue her advocacy for her district here at City Hall. And Tanya Fernandez-Anderson from District Seven, the first Muslim and African immigrant elected to our body. She is a strong advocate for our children and families. Each of you have demonstrated your dedication to public service to earn this job. And I am confident, and I know our colleagues are confident, that you will make a difference for the people of Boston. And we look forward to working with you on many issues impacting not just your district, but also the city. As you start as a city councillor, don't forget that you have well-respected colleagues that you can count on as well. Councillors Flaherty, Mejia, Baker, Arroyo, Bach, Braden, and Edwards are all dedicated public servants that we can count on. And I thank them for their guidance and leadership in helping make Boston a welcoming city for all. As we welcome our new city councillors, we also say goodbye to some of our old friends. Councillor Campbell O'Malley, Asabi George, and the mayor of Boston, Councillor Janey, each of whom provided tremendous leadership to the city, especially during these difficult times. Councillor Wu, now Mayor Wu, was an excellent city council colleague, and I know she respects the important work and role of the city council. And we look forward to working with Mayor Wu and her team. In the last several weeks, many civic groups and neighbors have asked me what our focus is going to be in the new term. Well, during my time at the council, this body has kept public health, housing affordability and stability, equity, social and economic justice at the forefront of every discussion we have when it comes to our role in government, and I know that will continue. It is critical that we continue to always be mindful of issues impacting our seniors, persons with disabilities, working families, veterans, communities of color, and our immigrant neighbors as well. As councillors, our job is not always in the news, but the important work we do in city government in our neighborhoods is critical. We are in a position of public trust at what has been a very difficult time in our city, the country, and the world. COVID-19 cases are surging to record levels. This new variant is contributing to more uncertainty by the day. Governments need to adjust to protect our most vulnerable, avoid overwhelming our healthcare system, and keep society moving during this wave. Everyone remains in this together. Although we all want this to be over, it is critical that we continue to listen to the guidance of our scientists and public health professionals, and to stress to our neighbors the importance of vaccines, boosters, face coverings to limit the spread of the virus, or its impact when we have breakthrough cases. This discipline and sacrifice remains the best tool we have. And I also am fortunate, and I know my colleagues are fortunate, to have so many dedicated -- thousands of dedicated city employees. We see that dedication of our neighbors and city employees making a difference every day. Our first responders and frontline workers, mental health and medical professionals, educators, youth sports coaches, people working in this building and out of the building, janitors, custodians. Boston is a city with great spirit, history, and pride. Our communities deserve to have a city government that listens and works with them. This is why every constituent request is important, every voice is critical, everyone should have equitable access to city resources and services. This is especially important in the midst of a pandemic. This is the time to lift people up, come together, work together, and treat each other with respect and dignity. Boston works best when we work together. We are a body that will continue to listen, learn, and provide solutions while working closely with the Wu administration. I'm confident that we can make this happen. I look forward to being a part in this progress and making Boston the best city it can be. And at this time, I also want to recognize and thank my family that's also here, my four sisters, my brother, my wife Kristen, my daughter Caroline, and my son Stephen.[1536.33][1536.33][applause] I also want to say thank you to the tremendous work of the City Council's central staff that really makes us look good, but they're so professional and dedicated, working for the people of Boston. So thank you to the City Council's central staff.[1561.83][1561.83][applause] I also want to say thank you to Clerk Maureen Feeney's team at the Clerk's Office for always being there for us, providing the best advice and guidance on how we can be the best city councillors possible. So thank you, Clerk Feeney.[1581.14][1581.14][applause] And today's a day for the city councillors and their families. I know your families are so proud of you, they're honored, and we respect the hard work that you've put in to earn this position, and we know that your constituents are in good hands with this new body, this group of new city councillors that will continue to provide strong leadership in our city, and let's continue working together. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. We're also honored to have the mayor of the city, Michelle Wu, with us today. Thank you, Mayor.[1653.03][1653.03][applause] We're also honored to have a great colleague at the State House that really works closely with the city council and is a great advocate as well for the city of Boston, Representative Aaron Michaelowitz. We will begin with reports of public officers and others. Madam Clerk, please read docket 0123 to 0148.
Thank you, Mr. President. That has a nice ring to it. Docket 0123, notice received from the mayor of the appointment of Jessica Pierre as Chief Communication Officer, effective January 3, 2022. Docket 0124, notice received from the mayor of the appointment of Jennifer Vivar Wong as Interim Director of Office Language Access and Communication, effective January 3, 2022. Docket number 0125, notice received from the mayor of the appointment of Emily Shay as a Commissioner of the Age-Drawn Commission, effective January 3, 2022. Docket number 0126, notice received from the mayor of the appointment of Yasha Franklin Hodge as Commissioner of Public Works Department, effective January 3, 2022. Docket number 0127, notice received from the mayor of the appointment of Yasha Franklin Hodge as Chief of Streets, Transportation, and Sanitation, effective January 3, 2022. Docket number 0128, notice received from the mayor of the appointment of Alex Lawrence as Chief Information Officer, effective November 16, 2021. Docket number 0129, notice received from the mayor of the appointment of Sagoon Iduru, Chief of Economic Opportunity and Inclusion, effective January 3, 2022. Docket number 0130, notice received from the mayor of the appointment of Bradley Garrett as Interim Commissioner of Transportation Department, effective November 16, 2021. Docket number 0131, notice received from the mayor of the appointment of Mado Rivera Docket number 0131, notice received from the mayor of the appointment of Mado Rivera as Interim Commissioner of the Boston Center for Youth and Families effective November 16, 2021. Docket number 0132, notice received from the mayor of the appointment of Greg Rooney, Commissioner in Property Management Department effective November 16, 2021. Docket number 0133, notice received from the mayor of the appointment of Maureen Gasso as First Assistant Collector Treasurer for the Treasury Department effective November 16, 2021. Docket number 0134, notice received from the mayor of the appointment of Robert Santiago as Commissioner of Elder, I'm sorry, Veteran Services effective November 16, 2021. Docket number 0135, notice received from the mayor of the appointment of Allison Brusus as Commissioner, Environment Department effective November 16, 2021. Docket number 0136, notice received from the mayor of the appointment of Dionne Irish as Chief of Operations effective November 16, 2021. Docket number 0137, notice received from the mayor of the appointment of Edward McGuire as Executive Director of the Office of Neighborhood Services effective November 16, 2021. Docket number 0138, notice received from the mayor of the appointment of James Williamson as Interim Budget Director of the Office of Budget Management effective January 3, 2022. Docket number 0139, notice received from the mayor of the appointment of Kristin McCosh as Commissioner of the Disabilities Commission effective January 3, 2022. Docket number 0140, notice received from the mayor of the appointment of Kevin Coyne as Purchasing Agent for the Purchasing Department effective January 3, 2022. Docket number 0141, notice received from the mayor of the appointment of Tami Pust as Executive Director of the Office of Labor Relations effective November 16, 2021. Docket 0142, notice received from the mayor of the appointment of Sean Lyden as Commissioner of the Inspection Services Department effective November 16, 2021. Docket number 0143, notice received from the city clerk in accordance with Chapter Six of the ordinances of 1979 regarding action taken by the mayor on papers acted upon by the city council at its December 1, 2021 meeting. Docket 0144, notice received from the city clerk in accordance with Chapter Six of the ordinances of 1979 regarding action taken by the mayor on papers acted by the city council at its meeting of December 8, 2021. Docket number 0145, communication was received from the city clerk of the filing by the Boston Planning and Development Agency of the Second Amendment to the Report and Decision on 252 to 264 Huntington Ave, Chapter 121A Project. Docket number 0146, communication was received from the city clerk of the filing by the Boston Planning and Development Agency of the Eighth Amendment to the Report and Decision on Mission Main, Chapter 121A Project. Docket number 0147, notice received from the mayor of her absence from the city from 10:00 a.m. on Tuesday, December 14, 2021 until 6:05 p.m. Docket number 0148, notice received from the Police Commissioner in accordance with Section Three of the Boston Trust Act regarding civil immigrant detain, detainer results for calendar year 2021.
Thank you, thank you, Madam Clerk. Madam Clerk, these dockets will be placed on file.
If you can say the numbers, just zero.
Madam Clerk, docket 0123 to 0148, these dockets will be placed on file.
Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Personnel orders, moving on to personnel orders. Madam Clerk, please read docket 0149.
Thank you. Docket 0149, Counsel Flynn for Counsel Edwards.
The chair seeks suspension of the rules in passage of docket 0149. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. The ayes have it. The docket has passed.
Docket 0150, Counsel Flynn for Counsel Mejia.
The chair seeks suspension of the rules in passage of docket 0150. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say nay. The ayes have it. This docket has passed. Madam Clerk, please read docket 0151.
Thank you. Docket 0151, Counsel Flynn for Counsel Worrell.
The chair seeks suspension of the rules in passage of docket 0151. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. The ayes have it. The docket has passed. Madam Clerk, please read docket 0152.
Thank you. Docket 0152, Counsel Flynn for Counsel Louie Jean.
The chair seeks suspension of the rules in passage of docket 0152. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. The ayes have it. The docket has passed. Madam Clerk, please read docket 0153.
Docket 0153, Counsel Flynn for Counsel Lara Hicks.
The chair seeks suspension of the rules in passage of docket 0153. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. The ayes have it. The docket has passed. Madam Clerk, please read docket 0154.
Docket 0154, Counsel Flynn for Counsel Fernandez-Anderson.
The chair seeks suspension of the rules in passage of docket 0154. All of those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. The ayes have it. The docket has passed. Late files. Now, moving on to late files, I am informed by the clerk that there are two late-file matters. They are both 17F orders. We will take a vote to add these matters to the agenda. All of those in favor of adding the late-file matters, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say nay. Thank you. The late-file matters have been added to the agenda. Madam Clerk, please read the two late matters into the record.
Thank you, Mr. President. In the city council, order of Counsel Frank Baker, order that under the provisions of 17F of Chapter 452 of the Acts of 1948 as amended and any other applicable provisions of law, the mayor be and hereby is requested to obtain and deliver to the city council within one week of the receipt thereof the following information relative to COVID-19 vaccination mandate for city of Boston employees filed in the city council on January 3, 2022. The second 17F filed, an order of Counsel Frank Baker ordered that under the provisions of 17, Section 17F of Chapter 452 of the Acts of 1948 as amended and any other applicable provisions of law, the mayor be and hereby is requested to obtain and deliver to the city council within one week the receipt thereof the following information relative to the Best Western Roundhouse Hotel filed in the city council on January 3, 2022.
The chair recognizes City Councilor Frank Baker.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Sorry, this is unorthodox filing this, but we're in a period here now where we won't have any hearings, we don't have any committees. Both of these things are looking to be implemented in the month of January, so that's why we have the 17Fs. Sorry for the late file, I ran up against the holidays and didn't get them filed on a, in the proper timeline. The first one is about the mandates, the COVID vaccination mandates, and I'm not taking a position, I'm for it, I'm against it, but what's going to happen here in the next little while that I want clarification is, first of all, what jurisdiction do we have to go into private business and tell them they have to collect, or they have to do the vax passports? But more importantly, we're talking about hundreds of people here that can potentially lose their jobs, whether it's police, firefighters, teachers, people that are collecting tickets, people that are giving tickets. Every department's going to be affected by this. We have no idea who they are, what they are, how many they are, and if they're going to have an opportunity to be able to come back to work if they comply. I'm looking for some clarification on this. And the second one is on the Roundhouse Hotel, which I differ, I couldn't be any more different from what the pathway that this administration has taken right here. Simple things, who's the leaseholder? Is it Public Health Commission? What's our commitment going to be there? Meaning, what's our money commitment going to be in there? Is there going to be drugs used on the premise? What is the security plan? When we asked in a meeting what the security plan was, the person from BMC said it was very high level. So whatever that means, I can handle high level. I want to know what that security plans are. Again, these were all filed because we are unable to have hearings now. We don't have our committees, we don't have our, we don't have our, yes, we won't, we will not be having hearings for a month now. So this is pressing, and in a 17F, it's a face-to-face meeting. I would like to have someone sitting in front of me and explain to me all these things here. The Roundhouse isn't a surprise. It's not a surprise. We've been asking for over a month here. All these questions, I've been on record sending it over to this administration, all these questions. So it shouldn't be a surprise why they're not being, why they're not being answered. We're asking the people on the street if they want hotel rooms. We're not asking the neighborhood what their opinions are. It reminds me, if you ever wanted a question answered about the BPDA under Menino, good luck. You'd never get, you'd never get an answer, a question answered. At least I wouldn't. Had nobody to call, nobody to return my calls. This feels eerily the same. So everybody that's here now, you should be asking questions here because it feels like, I'm going to save my comments. Thank you, thank you, Mr. Chair. It feels good to have you saying "Mr. Chair" again, although I may call you "Madam Chair" every once in a while because it's just ingrained in my head. Sorry about that if I do do that. Appreciate you and sorry for the late files. Thank you, everyone.
Thank you, Counsel Baker. The chair seeks suspension of the rules in passage of the first late matter. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. The ayes have it. The matter has been passed. The chair seeks suspension of the rules in passage of the second late-file matter. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. The ayes have it. The matter has been passed. Memorials. And let me also note that the recording of this through the stenographer is being recorded remotely. Thank you, Madam Clerk. Memorials. Today, we will adjourn our meeting in memory of the following individuals. For counselors Flynn, Baker, Flaherty, and the body, Eric and Calderon. A moment of silence, please. Thank you. Chair moves that when the council adjourns today. It does so in memory of the those-mentioned individuals, and it is scheduled now to meet again in the Ayonella Chamber on Wednesday, January 26, at 12 noon. All in favor of adjournment, please say aye.
Aye.
The council is adjourned.